...page that has all of the dates. When we started the fair funding lawsuit in William Penn, they are listed as the main plaintiffs, but there are others. There's parents and other school districts that are in on this. So we started back in 2014. And it took some really brave people who were willing to say, yes, we're going to go against the state. And some of those people you will know, Mr. Bruni was very active in this and bringing it. We had to find a family who was willing to do that. The Miller family was willing. So we filed the lawsuit in 2014. We were actually denied. We, in March of 21, 2015, this is prior, I don't have that slide in here, but March 21, 2015, the Commonwealth Court said, no, we're not going to give you your day in court. The legislature has decided what they're going to fund you. We're not going to make any changes with that. And so we had, of course, appeal. And we did. We appealed, went to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. In September 13, 2016, they heard our arguments as to why we should have just our day in court. That's all we were asking for at that moment. And we present to the court why we think the funding formula is not fair. And of course, it took them, I think it was a year, and I actually have the dates here. One year and five months later, they said, yeah, we'll let you take it back to the Commonwealth Court. And of course, thankfully, Lact, who was one of the Supreme Court justices, said, you know, it's not fair for the legislature to govern themselves and make sure they're fulfilling their constitutional mandates. And, but it was still up to the plaintiffs to make sure that when we went to court, we had, we could substantiate what we were asking for, and that's the fair funding. So we went back to the Commonwealth Court on March the 7th. And on March the 7th, it snowed like crazy. And that was a snow day for us, so many of us couldn't get there. And so we, they were still presented the arguments, and what we were arguing against then was two of our legislators were saying, Scarnetti and Terzai. Terzai was saying that although education is a great thing, it's not something we have to give you. It might be good for you, but it's not something we have to do. And then Terzai said, hey, we've got a funding formula. But what most people don't know about the funding formula is the following. Only new money is put through the funding formula. All old money that's been given to school districts for years and years, not put through that formula. So, you know, only about 2% of the education budget is put through this new formula. What I want you to know is the state only funds about 37% of a school's budget. The rest of it falls on local tax books, 63%. So yesterday, we got a booklet, says the State of Education, and there was a two-page handout. On the back of your other handout, I just gave this to you for your reading pleasure. And the only thing I'll call to your attention on that is Senate Bill 2. Look at the words down at the bottom. Where it says, "Public schools suffer from a lack of state support," which in turn heightened a tax burden on property owners, many of whom are fixed, on fixed incomes, cycling off even more subsidy so that families who choose private schools can get their own subsidy as a plan that serves a minority of Pennsylvanians. So what this new bill is saying, that if your child intends a private school, you can now get money for that private school. So that's just taking more money away from the public schools. So we get this document, yesterday actually, and board members will have a full copy of the booklet. But at a glance, if you look at that... I have a... Thank you. I need one more copy of the document. Oh, thank you. So, looking at that, it talks about... It's a report on all of education across the state. State's education intended to be a barometer of not only the key indicators of public performance, but also what standardized test is happening. But what, what, I think this is just a good segue for Mr. Kopp when he's talking about the budget. What keeps chief school administrators up? What keeps superintendents up at night? Keeps business managers up at night? 83% of us are staying up because of budget pressures. The other is with the new ESSUP regulations that have come in, how are we going to meet those requirements with limited funding? And then, of course, any maintenance or school construction. What's our top five budget pressures? Pension costs, 82%. 52% for charter school payments, 37% for special education costs, 36% for inadequate state funding, and then 31% is our healthcare. So this, those are the budget pressures that we face as a school district. You could see how do, how our school system balancing this budget, getting it, 76% of them are taking from their balance funds. We did that two or three years ago. We're at the point where we have no fund balance, really left to draw from. 75% are raising local property taxes, which as you know, that's where we are right now in the budget season. 40% of schools are increasing class sizes. We're at a very large class size already, anywhere from 25 to 30 in our elementary classrooms. Next is reducing staff. And people do not like it when we start talking about reducing staff. And then, of course, in Pennsylvania, the only way you can reduce staff is to get rid of programs. So when you're looking at programs, it would be our specials like music, visit, could be sports. Those are the things that we have to look at when we're reducing programs. On the back, I just wanted to call your attention to, you're going to look at where we are. This is across the state and achievement gaps. You'll see that. I thought that was important for you to see. But down at the bottom, special education folks. The cost of educating special education students has risen by about 29%. I'm going to round it up. The state has only increased what they provide us to support this special education by 4.3%. We're already at a 24% deficit in trying to find what we need for students. Okay? That's all I have. Any questions of me? I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kopp.
Could you even help me move on? Two is... So, I have a handout and a PowerPoint. And like Jane said, I'll try to be brief. For some folks, they've seen, heard something I've said before, some of it's new. So what I'll do is I'll quickly go through our budget, what we're looking at this year for the, or coming up for the 18, 19 school year. So until we get there, the first page, what I did was I prepared a summary, which I prepared a summary of the educate, of the expenses versus a summary of the revenue. So what you're seeing here is, this is the overall summary, the 1,000 all the way to 2,000 function. The functions are a PDE code. So overall, last year, you see our overall budget for '17, '18, where this year, when I say last year, I mean, excuse me, I'm thinking of next year. This year, our overall budget is about $90 million. What we're looking at going into '18, '19 is roughly a $93 million budget, which is a 2.94% increase. The majority of the increases that we have tallied on the expense on, for the most part, are contract related or maintained costs because of special education. And you'll see there, and once, in the other presentation that we had, we had a little more breakout of what the costs are. But for us, like any other business out there, or any other company out there, the majority of our expenses are going to come in personnel costs, and it's probably the same thing that the borough sees or any other business sees. You'll see here, for '16, '17, this is what our percentages broke out for salaries and benefits, Peers' and retirement. So you're looking at roughly almost 62% of your costs are personnel related, which is about normal for any business out there. And if you look on this slide here, on page three, you'll see, and as Jane had stated before, 10% of our budget are related to charter school costs. And that's been an increase in costs for us for the past six or seven years, and it's been escalating recently at a rate of about 19% per year. The other major increase of costs that you see here are special ed core base, and I say this is core base, because this is everything that is strictly in front of the kids. And you're going to see on the next slide, I'm going to talk about how there's additional costs for special ed. But this is what you, the core costs here, what you're seeing of what's directly in front of these special ed children. And the next slide, you'll see where I talked about my expanded order. Our transportation cost is roughly 7%, maintenance 6%, low-tech community colleges, a lot of our community takes advantage of it, is roughly 1%, and our debt is 4%. So the other is, this is everything else that comes in. This is the, all the extra stuff they get to do to keep things in the classrooms and things like that. That's the additional 5%. So...
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the other, this 5% is quite a large comparison for 4%? Can you elaborate a little bit more on what that other is?
So that could be anything else out there, outside of, that could be extra stuff to be put in the classrooms. This could be...
Is that technology or...?
It could be technology as well, because the technology portion is not going out of here, correct? So that's what it could be. I mean, it's a combination, but what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get the main core of what, of objects throughout there for spending. So what you see here, when I talked before about special education, and what you see here, there is a gap here. And you'll see for '16, '17, we spent roughly $27 million in special ed. This is the core cost, but this is the additional cost that we spend on special education for our transportation, for our counseling services, our guidance services, our nursing services, and any other service that are combined outside of the core area. So what you see there is that we get roughly $4.5 million in state subsidy for special ed, but we spend almost $27.5. So there's a gap there of approximately $20, $23 million there in special ed. So I wanted to show, and this goes to what Jane had talked about, with the funding formula, and that means a law with the fair funding formula. This is what every school district has, but honestly, it hits William Penn a little bit harder than it hits most school districts. So the other major cost that we have here is going to be our charter school costs. As I stated before, our charter school costs every year recently have gone up at approximately 19%. So this is not a bash on charter schools, this is just a bring it to light of what the funding formula works and how it works for charter schools. Unfortunately, William Penn, you'll see an increase in it, and it looks like this increase is going to continue to grow every year. So this is something that we just don't, it's out of our control to an extent, and the funding is, to me, is done improperly, and it hurts the district like William Penn. And you saw what happened in Chester, where their charter tuition increased, and increased, and increased. So this is something that we have to keep an eye on, that we have to be prepared for. So we're going to talk about revenues. So I talked about the expenses, and if I go quickly, I apologize, and we've talked about this before, and I just wanted to give you guys a quick snapshot. So last year, so this, this year, looking at $95 million for our budget. So you see some increases there. There's an increase there in state subsidies. So this year, thus far, the, the way it looks with the governor's budget is that we are approximately $742,000 to the good right now. And if you noticed before, on the other slide, we were 1.6, we were 2.6 increase in expenses. That gives us a gap there. So the major increase we have for, for state subsidy is going to be your increase in basic ed subsidy, which is your major subsidy coming from the state, and your special ed subsidy. Those are the two major ones. And there's also a slight increase for the increase in retirement costs, and you'll see that on the later slide. So one of the bigger questions everyone asks is, what did you, what are our tax collection? So this is our current tax collection for the 2017 year. And you'll see the bottom right-hand corner, and this, this is troubling for us. Right now, we're about 5, 16 in a hole. And this is the first year we've been in a hole on tax collection. Generally, in the past couple of years, we've been to the positive, and I'm not sure exactly what, what's going on this year, but this big first year, we came into a negative on tax collection. And I'm pretty sure, and the collection rate is probably close, I'm not sure, I haven't told the market yet, that's what you get. I'm sure the collection rate is probably close to what you guys are collecting locally. So this is the summary page. Summary page, where are our total expenses versus our total revenue? And you'll see, there's roughly a 1.9 million dollar gap there, is what we're looking at this year, coming to finish up the budget. And, and, a total revenue, 2.6 million dollar increase, $742,000 increase in, 2.6 million dollars piece in expenses, I apologize, and a $742,000 increase in revenue gives you difference of 1.9. So this page here shows the differences of what makes up that. And as I stated before, the majority of our expenses are salaries. And you'll see we have approximately $1.1 million increase in total salary. This is for all, everyone included, all employees going forward. Healthcare is roughly $50,000 increase. We are part of a healthcare consortium in Delaware County with all the other school districts in Delaware County. This year, we had a very, very good year as far as healthcare increase in healthcare costs. Peers' is the retirement system. I didn't put a slide up here, but in the last couple of years, we had a lot of skyrocketing Peers' costs. This finally looks as, the Peers' costs have leveled off a little bit, and for some, it may look, hey, how can you say leveled off with a $400,000 increase? Because for the last couple of years, we had approximately almost $800,000, $900,000, maybe a million dollar increases a year in Peers'. And this is a direct reflection of the increases in salaries and increases in the Peers' rates. So the next items down, you'll see there are increased calls for outside placing of special ed, and costs that we had for early intervention. Early intervention are kids that are, have been identified with special ed needs that are being provided services by the IU. These are kids that honestly we have no control over. These kids have been identified, and these services are provided, and they have been identified as kids within the William Penn School District. Next is educational settlements. These are cases where we've had parents who filed suit against the district, so they felt things weren't in order, but we're seeing an increase in that, so we have to adjust for that increase in costs. Next are approved private schools. Again, this, these are kids who are home-based within the district, but they're placed outside for whatever, for various reasons, whether it be for mental, mental reasons, physical reasons, or behavioral reasons. But we, we still have to deal with the increased costs there. And you'll see the one highlight area, which I touched on earlier, is charter school tuition. To be honest with you, we don't know exactly how much. I'm not going to estimate how much the increase is about, but that is a big burden that is going to eventually swallow all of us up. I mean, the charter school is growing at a rate that goes faster than what anyone can keep up with. And I'll be honest with you, it's a scary situation looking forward. Our maintenance contract, and everything else is just, for the most part, a general contract, is our maintenance contract is $50,000 increase. It's a 1% increase. Our transportation's a 1% increase, it's there. We have an increased cost in early interventions, I stated before, because those early intervention numbers are growing over the last couple of years. So these are kids that we, again, there's additional costs because those kids had to be picked up and transported, and this increase in fuel, everyone sees it right now, with gas prices going up, so we're preparing for those gas prices to go up to approximately $35,000. So you'll see our total estimated increase is roughly $2.6 million, which reflects the prior page. You'll see on the right-hand column, our revenues, as I stated before, our biggest increases are our basic ed funding, hopefully government budget will stay in place, and those increases are special ed, $111,000, Peers' $200,000. And you see, we have a negative property assessment. So property assessments come through, and you talked about it on a regular page, where people are going through, they're having their property reassessed. Sometimes these are properties that are shells, and, you know, people pick them up, they're going back to market, and they're going through the process. And that's what you see this year, total of roughly negative $50,000 property assessment. Okay? So I now want to, rather quickly, I apologize if I've lost anyone. Does anyone have any major questions, if there's any out there?
Mr. Kopp?
Sure.
Last, last year, how much money was paid to Vision Charter School Public Pet?
Last year, we paid approximately, off the top of my head, we paid $1.4 million.
And you said you don't know what the pad will be this year for all?
For overall, so, and what I, so when I track the charter school costs over the last couple of years, we've been trending upwards at 19% increase. So for the most part, we've been increasing approximately a million, million and a half each year, costs in charter schools, or a million, million dollar increase minimum. Particularly when you mentioned, so what's happening with Visions is, part of the charter allows them to increase their grade level every year. So as that increases every year, this, that is a burden that we're, the cost that we're picking up. So how that flows and how the tuition rate goes, if there's a kid who is, let's say, quote unquote, a regular education kid, we pay approximately $11,000 a year for that student. So if there is a kid that's identified as a special needs kid, a child that has an IP, we pay approximately $32,000 a year to whatever split it, whatever charter school is, but we're just, we're just speaking about Visions. So whatever charter school is. So whether that charter school is a brick and mortar charter school, or whether it's a cyber charter school, the cost is still the same.
I think it would be safe to say that Vision is a brick and mortar school.
Vision is a brick and mortar school, correct, yes. So...
Mr. Kopp? Where do you, where do you see this increase going to each year? Where, what I'm saying to you, where are we going to be in five to 10 years with the charter schools in the budget?
If I'm honest with you, my concern is that if we, we may not move as quickly, but we might be in a Chester situation where we're being overwhelmed by charter school costs. Most of our regular costs, most of our operational costs have leveled off, to be honest with you. So what we're seeing is, again, years past, the biggest increase that we saw was the retirement cost. That was escalating at an astronomical rate. That has leveled off at this particular point. So what we're seeing now is the increase in charter school costs that, quite honestly, we just, you can't keep up with it, I mean, at this particular rate. And what's interesting is, our enrollment on the elementary level has not decreased. Some people may think, oh my gosh, you're losing these kids, you're losing these kids to charter schools. I honestly know that we're losing students to charter schools. I think these are students who were at one time, it's either one of two things in my opinion, and it's either these are kids who were at one time were in Catholic school, who have chosen not to go to Catholic school, and have chosen to go more to charter school, or we're seeing an influx in our, in our population in the area. Because our enrollment on the elementary level has not actually, we're actually increasing our...
115 students.
Right, 115. So it's not, so we've always heard the thing of, well, well, why don't you guys provide this, and the kids won't leave. Our kids aren't leaving. Quite frankly, they're not. I mean, we're busting at the seams on the elementary level. So, but the answer to your question is, eventually, if it keeps increasing the way it is, because there is a maximum of how much you can raise taxes. So, and let me make this clear, raising taxes is not what we're in the game to do. Unfortunately, there's no other game out there, not, not game, there's no other funding, and I said game, I used a loose term, there's no other funding formula out there about the state. The state has basically set it up that basically you have to raise your taxes locally by assessing taxes on property value. And unfortunately, it's a unfortunate situation, and it's unfortunate funding, that it hurts areas like ours. So basically, the state has said, okay, you guys figure this out on your level, we're done with it. And it's unfortunate. So basically, the only methodology out there right now, is restock raise taxes to keep up with expenses. And right now, what we're seeing from the state is, we see roughly, and you saw what we saw there, our base, our major increase is roughly a 2% increase in funding. And, and, and I go back to what Jane had mentioned, so the biggest subsidy that we receive from the state is our basic ed subsidy, which we get roughly $22 million. So, and they made this funding formula, and they started, all the new money that goes through is what is processed out of that. So even though, even though the governor puts a lot of money into what's called basic ed funding, all the old money still stays the same. So hypothetically, what you had is, years ago, districts used to get paid off the number of enrollment that they had in the schools. So you have a district similar to, I use Centennial as an example. Centennial had a air force base up there, and they had a high population of the air force base. So they got paid X number of dollars on their enrollment. But what's happened is, their enrollment has increased because the air force base isn't operating at 100% capacity, but they have not taken away that subsidy that they were getting. So they had to hold harmless agreement, which doesn't hurt a district like that. And you're seeing the same thing in the middle of the state, because you have the outs, you have the east and the west side of the state, but the population in the middle of the state isn't as large as it was years ago. But they still have not taken away the money from those districts for the major subsidies. So this is why the funding, this is why we had that, that case out there. Because even though the government said, okay, you guys are getting fair funded, they're only fair funding off of new money. The new money is a minute portion of the overall education budget from the government. So not to get too tech, not to get too into it, but I wanted to try to answer your question.
And, and, I mean, what is our curriculum going to look like in five to 10 years for the students going to public school? Are you guys going to be able to teach the necessary things that these young people need?
Well, that, that's a good question, and that's what we're trying to do, that's the attempt. I mean, that's the goal right now for the district, is, and we, we have the curriculum that other people have out there. I mean, Jane, I'm not sure if you want to jump in, but our curriculum is the same as other places. What we try to do, we, what we need is the additional resources going forward to make sure that everything else is on par. We'd like to have, we'd like to have more technology in our district. We'd like to have more things accessible so our kids can have the same opportunities as the kids maybe three miles or four miles away in another direction.
What happens is, most districts put their curriculum on a five to seven year cycle. So every five to seven years, they look at what's new out there, what they want to replace. We haven't replaced anything at the high school in over, I know in the time I've been here, and I've been here 10 years. So they're still using the same literature book that they used 10 years ago. Not that it's bad, I mean, we're trying very hard. They pull resources off the internet, they're using other things that they can help supplement in our English language arts classes. But our high school has not had new materials in...
Are you guys gonna be able to teach the necessary things that these young people need?
That, that's a good question, that's what we're trying to do, that is the attempt. I mean, that's the goal right now for this district, is, is, and we, we have the curriculum of the people I have out there. I mean, Jane, I'm not sure if you wanna jump in, but our curriculum is the same as other places. What we try to do, we, what we need is the additional resources going forward to make sure that everything else is on par. We'd like to have, we'd like to have more technology in our district. We'd like to have more things accessible to our kids who have the same opportunities as the kids, maybe three miles or four miles away in another direction.
What happens is, most districts put their curriculum on a five-to-seven year cycle. So every five to seven years, they look at what's new out there, what they wanna replace. We haven't replaced anything at the high school in over, I know in the time I've been here, and I've been here ten years, so they're still using the same literature book that they used ten years ago. Not that it's bad, I mean, we're trying very hard, they pull resources off the internet, they're using other things that they can help supplement in our English language arts classes, but our high school has not had new materials in, I know, at least ten years.
We went, so, I'll, I'll give a quick, we went and met with the state, we went and met with the Department of Education a couple of years ago, and, and I'll paraphrase what they said to us, is, hey, as long as you guys keep the doors open, keep the lights on, you're a viable school district. And it's, it's a, it's a very unfortunate way to look at it, but it goes back to what I said, they said, hey, you guys figure this out, you know, we, we give you this. And, and honestly, it works if I'm in a more affluent district that has higher assessment, um, property assessment. It works. For us, it does not. It, it, we're behind the eight ball, quite frankly. You know, and then it, it basically, the state has basically said, do the process, hey, you guys figure this out. And I don't think, and I don't know when it'll change, it'll probably change when it affects more folks, to be honest with you. And that's, that, that's, that's...
It's affecting us now, I see it on our streets.
Well, it'll, but once it starts affecting other zip codes, then you'll see, in my opinion, that, that, then you'll see more people involved, and more people are gonna make a change.
Mr. Cuff, um, you stated, um, with regards to the, um, educational settlements, you're at two-hundred now, and you're gonna see possibly an increase. Can you kind of touch basis on why we're seeing, or why there's gonna be an increase? What, what's the basis on these educational settlements without going into specifics?
What, what we're finding is, what we have, the average, again, not to get too technical, what we have is, the average percentile of your enrollment for a school district of special ed kids is roughly sixteen percent, in that range, sixteen to eighteen percent. William Penn is running at roughly, I'm gonna say eighteen to twenty percent in that range, sorry, in that range.
Twenty, twenty-one percent.
So, so you had that, you had that increase there, but also what you have is you have an increase of kids who were, and I, and I, again, I don't determine this proper, but higher need kids, higher need, especially higher need kids. So they require extra, additional attention and extra additional services. So at some particular point, if a child is not getting that service, they have, what's a child, called a child advocate or someone else who will come in and say, my child is not receiving proper services, and not receiving adequate services in their mind, and this is where a settlement will come in, and they'll, they'll follow suit against the district.
Okay, so the, I, that's the reason why the IEP is in place, to follow that IEP, which is written, correct?
Correct.
So where, where, where are we faltering with regards to...
So it, it, it could be a gamut of reasons, but nine times out of ten, and again, I'm not a special good, good person, but I, I, I would like to think that sometimes, it goes, it goes back to resources, it goes back to having resources available to provide those services that are needed. I mean, we have our psychologists who are stretched out right now, their loads are at the limit, you know, and same thing with certain areas. It's, it's the resources that are required to provide those adequate, um, education and, and the, what's required from the IEPs and the programs. Because one thing, one of the new battles is, years ago, not, I've done this for about twenty-two years, years ago, when all the kids were placed out to the IU, and IU can be expensive, you place, anytime you place a student outside of your own walls, you're at someone else's mercy for their expenses. So years ago, there was a big push of bring the kids back, bring them in, we can do it better. So we, we tried to make that a concerted effort, to bring the kids back, to get them involved, but when you bring them back, if you don't have the, the, the resources, you don't have the, the facilities, it, it's problematic. So you, you're trying to meet the best of both worlds, is what we're trying to do. You, you try to bring them back so the kids are, they're made, so that they're made, so they're, they're involved with kids, and, and they're involved with kids from the community.